Great, it is seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the meetings in order. It is Monday, August eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-five, and this is our regular August meeting. So, uh, Ms. Clark will take roll call for us, and then I would look for approval of the consent agenda items below that had some items embedded for us, which included the approval of minutes from the regular board meeting on July twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-five, the Board Academy meeting on August fourth of two thousand and twenty-five, the payment of bills, the employee resignations, professional teacher contracts, the athletic co-curricular instructional leadership hires, and the alternative open enrollment applications. So if there's anything that needs to be pulled out, let me know. Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve all of those consent agenda items.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Sue, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Second by Rick, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carried there. Alright, next we have communication with the public, I believe there's a couple people signed up. So I'm gonna read a quick statement. Board will not entertain public comments for up to thirty minutes. Please note that if you wish to make or provide public comment to the board, you must register your intention to do so upon arrival at the meeting. You must be a district resident and are requested to preface your comments by announcement of your name addressing group affiliation if applicable. Public comments are limited to a total of three minutes in length per individual. Your time is up, I will remind you that your time is over, and you should conclude your remarks. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. No persons may address or question board members individually. Please note that certain subjects are not appropriate for public comment. Comments that are personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise inappropriate are not permitted. If you make such comments, I will interrupt you and admonish you to refrain from doing so. If you persist on doing so, I will advise you that your time is over, and you will not be permitted to offer any further comments. All participants are encouraged to ensure that all information offered is truthful and honest. False statements or stigmatizing charges may subject the individual making such statements to legal repercussions, including but not limited to defamation claims. In addition, please note that our board has adopted certain policies regarding district management and the roles of the board and its administration play in managing the district. Therefore, please understand that you may be referred to other district officials if it is apparent from your comments that you have not brought your concerns to the attention of right district personnel so that you can receive the assistance that you need. Finally, please remember that I will be managing this public comment portion of the meeting so that we can meet all the objectives that I have mentioned in this introduction. Uh, we have two people that signed up, and the first one is Daniel Crego.
First, thank you for your, your time, your commitment, and your endurance. These meetings can run long, and I respect the dedication it takes to sit through hours of reports, public comments, and policy debates that we thus serve the students of TESD. Over the past year, I have attended many of these meetings. I've listened and video recorded them as I'm not a note taker. I have nodded along, and yes, I've even quietly tested a few friends when things got spicy as we collectively test the limits of human endurance and possibly the structural integrity of these chairs. But I've never once stepped up to this microphone. Not for referrals, not for land purchases, not even implementation of the four K all-day schedule, which honestly came close. But tonight, however, I rise to something we are geared to lead the people. Bathroom breaks. Yes, I've done my research. I've read the bylaws, I've even skimmed Robert's rules of borders, looking for guidance on what to do when we're latter, staging a silent protest in hour three of a board meeting. Because in all ser- seriousness, that's often when the biggest decisions are made. Towards the end, the vax are sore, patients are still, and no one has stood up since roll call. That is not the ideal condition for optimal public discourse or for major votes that impact the students and staff. Students get breaks, teachers get breaks, the custodial staff literally holds the keys to the kingdom of restrooms. Even standardized, even standardized testing allows for time for a bathroom. But public meetings, we're expected to tough it out as if biology is some kind of personal weakness. So I am proposing a simple humane fix for meetings. This is actually embarrassing here. Oh, that's, that was gonna handle as well. So I'm proposing a simple humane fix. For meetings expected to go over ninety minutes, schedule a five-minute recess. Call it, call it a wellness recess or a five-minute rematch, I'm flexible. Just make it official and predictable. In conclusion, I think that we all agree that public decisions are best made when people aren't distracted by their own discomforts. Let's make room for common sense and our common needs. Thank you for your time, and if you need me, since I lost five fifty-eight votes, I might be in the restroom or stretching my legs all day.
Thank you. Alright, another one we have is Lindsay McCawley.
McCawley.
McCawley, I'm sorry.
I'm over there, can I just speak from here?
If you wanted to speak, it's probably better to come up. If you're really uncomfortable, you don't have to, but.
I don't have a, a speech prepared.
That's okay.
But I just have a question on regarding safety concerns of our students. Um, I know that there is quite a few instances in our schools regarding bullets and guns and that kind of thing. I just kinda wanted to know, what are we doing to be proactive this next year?
So, so just from a meeting standpoint, the public comment, we're not allowed to go back and forth on that type thing? Since it's not in the agenda, we can't really address you back and forth?
Is this something in motion, or is it something like that we should be like anticipating for student safety? What are we implementing?
I don't know. I don't know that I could really comment on. Should I keep the note being off of, from our students?
You could put them up in, I'd put out metal protectors or actually maybe all of our students. Which is like, they give seventy-nine questions.
I'm sorry, it just, it just, yeah, a little bit, thank you. Okay, uh, that was it for public comment. So that was the end of public comment tonight. Uh, next we go into reports. Uh, we have recognition of staff and students, and then we move into district strategic initiatives and their student achievement. We'll begin with a report on the Western Technical College transcripted credits to Toma High School for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got some information from Western Technical College, a little bit different than in previous years. While in previous years, we have the overall number of transcripted credits. Uh, this year they provided enrollments. So from our high school in fall of two thousand and twenty-four, we had four hundred and ninety-nine total enrollments. Those have been for classes in one to three credits. So I bet you those were added around that twenty-two total when I gave you the second semester as well. And, uh, projected, uh, savings to students of hundred and seventy-six thousand thirty-one dollars in semester one. And then spring two thousand and twenty-five, four hundred and sixty-seven total enrollments and projected savings of one hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. So very much on par with previous years, and, uh, looking forward to this year's, uh, enrollments. We've got a lot of tabs here in the high school enrollment manual that, uh, a lot of transcripted opportunities with Western Technical College, and we truly appreciate all of our other partnerships with HIR as well. So thank you.
Okay, just a report. Any questions or any? Okay, thank you for that information. Uh, next would be services to the Toma community, and under that we have acceptance of gifts of money and materials.
Every month, uh, we're so honored to have wonderful donations. A gift of two hundred and fifty dollars from First Community Credit Union for lunch accounts. Um, also for two hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-five cents, a donation from the Gloria D. A. Boothren Church for lunch accounts, and for one thousand dollars, a donation from Kurt Moees Olson for Student Assistance Fund, one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars this month in donations.
No questions, I look for motion.
I'll make a motion if you accept those. I'll say.
Okay, motion by Sue, and a second by Heidi, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, good. Keep drugging here. Uh, under that, we have future focused, uh, beginning with, uh, the WASB, the Wisconsin Area of Smooth Bowers, Region Six meeting, which is gonna be held October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five in Alaska.
Yes, uh, one way to be transformational in what we do is absolutely through your leadership here as a board. So those are opportunities there, uh, both in October and January. Now we've got all the information ready to go, we're starting to build the WASB annual conference sessions. So reach out to, um, Chilin and myself if you'd like to go, we had a fantastic group last year. You can always post a notice of quorum so that certain people can go. So, uh, wonderful ways to transform what we do through strong leadership opportunities that we can take part in and bring back to the board.
Does anybody know that they're going to be there? In advance, just curious, how many go to the state one? I don't know if I'll be able to hold it one because harvest, but.
I would, I would toy with the little natural one. I've been thinking about that.
What do you think it says?
Cause that was on the school board.
School board name?
Well, no, it's on, um.
Oh, it's on school board, I got, I got it.
The information is more, more related than.
Okay. Okay, I'll mark that down on this, so we will just, yes, see if I just think so. Cool, alright, awesome. Alright. Okay, uh, reports engagement, uh, would be an update on the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six employee hiring process.
Right, uh, so we have some items tonight to, uh, get some positions filled, but still out there as far as I know, middle school, one special education teacher. From our district office level, we have ongoing speech pathology, uh, position and positions, uh, open. Our English Language Learning Teacher, our coordinator position not yet filled, but we'll have some support structures through CISA four on that in the near term. And also, uh, at Miller and Lemonwire Elementary, our PBIS teacher openings yet. So six right now, but, uh, looking very good for the start of the school year.
Sounds good. And how about an update on the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six in-service program the week of August twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth next week?
Fantastic week, and I wanna thank Angie Bluber and Michelle Clark for putting together just a home run, knocking it out of the park in service that we continue our first day, drink to the end of the year. Angie, thank you so much for being here tonight to talk through things.
So on Monday, we have a teacher prep day where we basically told everybody they are not allowed to touch teachers. It's so that they can get ready, prep their rooms. We have a lot of open houses coming up that week, so we just want them to be able to get in and do whatever they need to do during that day so that they're prepared for the week. So then Tuesday will be our all-staff, like, welcome back. Where everybody will come to the auditorium, we'll do our traditional hot breakfast, our traditional presentation where Mike speaks, and we have some, um, we, we all talk. And then around ten o'clock, we will split. So support staff will go into the small gym, and they have a keynote presentation from CISA. And the teachers will be in the auditorium, um, and their presentation is on From Compliance to Connection, Engaging Learners Through Meaningful Assessment, which is our anchor statement three, which ties to all of our sake and, and the strategic plan that we have going down. So it's our third anchor statement. So then they'll, they'll leave for lunch, it's about a ninety-minute keynote, they'll leave for lunch. When they come back, we have ed camps that we'll have ready, and so teachers will be able to attend three forty-five-minute sessions. So basically, um, I'm sending this out on Monday, next Monday for them, so they'll be able to peruse it. But we have, um, we have the ed camps like listed, and so we have things with all three of our, um, anchor statements. So like, if you're new to the district, and we color-coded them, so if you're new, you wanna attend like a green one. If you have been here and you have a little more experience and you want more information, it might be a review of some information with the new, you can go to some yellow ones. On the gray ones, we have three SEL, uh, breakouts that are, um, based on levels. We have an elementary session, a middle school session, and a high school session. Two of the sessions will be run by, um, people from CISA, and then one session will be run by Julian and Scott. Um, I'm leading a session on feedback and assessment, we have the sessions on data. So it's all either anchor statement one, two, or three, and really they get the choice to be able to attend which session that they want to. Um, we have descriptions of the sessions that will be emailed out to teachers on Monday so that they can look through it and know which sessions that they want to kind of attend when they get there on Tuesday. Um, and so that kind of concludes the, the afternoon for Tuesday.
And then for Tuesday, support staff, um, we're all together for breakfast and for the beginning of the day, but then we'll split out like we had said. And support staff's keynote is brains in the game, supporting today's learners with heart, science, and strategy. And then after lunch, um, they'll be coming back with me, and we're going to be doing trauma-informed care. Really what is trauma, what are, um, some things that students may be experiencing as they come to us? Also secondary trauma of how, um, things that may happen to you as you were growing up, affect how you interact with other people. And then also some trauma-informed, uh, practices to, uh, use within the schools. Um, we're using vector training for that, um, but it'll be a, a, more of an interactive than just sitting here.
And then Wednesday, we'll have, um, teachers back, well, every, every, it was too hard to do it, it was a lot of movements. Teachers will come in, there'll be donuts, um, and some drinks provided. And then basically the way that we're gonna run it with teachers is everybody's gonna be with their building. So they'll all be at the high school, we'll get different rooms spread out. So Miller will be with Miller, High School, et cetera. And so we have, basically, it's the same activity, but everybody's gonna do it building-wide. So they'll do like a, a community builder within their own staff to get to know one another. But then they're going to review and, um, share out the ed camps that they attended the day before so that as a building, they can see who went to what and be able to share. So we have a, like a structured activity for that. Um, and then at ten o'clock, the teachers will come to the auditorium. Well, I will lead, um, a present, what a forty-five-minute presentation, um, following the presentation that we did the day before, following the keynote around assessment. And then, um, when they come back from lunch, um, high school and middle school staff will, um, go back to their, their respective, um, locations, and they're gonna work on reviewing anchor statement one and two, talking about like, what does that way to early release look like, what are the expectations? Like, making sure you have your agenda ready, making sure like all the pieces of the PLC process that we want them to know and to do, just to walk them through it again. Cause we have a lot of new staff, so we wanna make sure everybody kind of understands what the expectations are for, for those days. So they're gonna walk through anchor statement one and two. Elementary, before they do that particular portion, they are actually going to go into, um, separate classrooms. So four K will be in a room, kindergarten will be in a room, first grade will be in a room. And our curriculum leaders are gonna run them through about a forty-five-minute, um, presentation where the summer curriculum leaders came in and they, they helped like review the pacing. So again, like, all schools will be teaching the same concepts at the same time, right? So if we're a fourth grader and we're at Miller, and we're a fourth grader at Lemonwire, during this time period, we have pacing mapped out, so any student would be getting that same learning. So they're sharing where those documents are, where the, um, new assessments are, they're sharing just all the information so that as new teachers, they know where to go and find the curriculum. And then the second part of that is they're gonna do the same thing that the high school and middle school are doing, and going over their anchor statements, um, one and two. Uh, and that will take them to the end of the day, but.
And then in the morning, um, support staff that deal directly with students, all of our certified and non-certified aides and, um, our building clerks will be, um, doing a interactive keynote with, uh, CISA and myself on various. And it's gonna be really more in-depth of what they did in the building meeting. It, making sure that, um, all adults are really understanding the why behind where we're doing things. Sometimes those conversations don't always get around to everybody in the building. The teachers are being more informed than our support staff is. So why is so important as to why we do things a certain way? And then in the afternoon, um, I am bringing, uh, again, he's called the ripple guy, and he actually talked to about three hundred and fifty lu- mostly lunch ladies, um, last week that Toma hosted for the whole Hulee region. And it's really about, um, kind of that taking care of yourself, taking care of others, and basically making this place where we're at every day at work a healthy place for everybody. So a lot to do with culture, um, and, and bringing your, how you interact and how, how you do things at work really does have an impact on the culture of our buildings, even though your, in quotations, just support staffers. And they really realize how important they're not just, uh, support centers. They are suitable as, you know, as everybody else is.
And teachers have PBIS in their, all of their back-to-school building meetings, so we didn't include it in the, in services because they each have, uh, the same presentation that they're doing at those, um, those meetings every season place. So then on Thursday, we have everybody back in the auditorium, and then from like eight to nine-thirty, we have office safety training for everybody district-wide. And then about nine-thirty, we're gonna break, and we're gonna take, uh, a group photo of everybody, all the employees on the football fields. Um, we'll have it, a big tee mapped out, and we'll have Angelica take it from like the, the top of the football stadium, right? So that we can, um, project that, but, uh, we have t-shirts and stuff coming just to show our Toma pride. And then when we come back, um, the kindergarten through eighth grade math have an iReady training. So iReady is our math, uh, resource that we use, and it was, um, up for renewal. And we, we extended it for one year because our high school and middle school, or our high school is also up for a new resource this year. And so we're, it took a year to be able, like, iReady had some changes, it had some updates to it, and we haven't had training since prior to COVID. And what we found was the program itself was missing some of the components. So for example, there's a student discourse, a lot of students talk to talk, there's manipulatives. But when we first, um, implemented it in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, that all went away, right? Couldn't touch all the things, you couldn't sit and talk to the students. And so there were components of it that got lost in, in the fold because, because of COVID. And then, um, so this training is going to really, um, bring us back to like the, the pieces that maybe we, we really didn't implement with true fidelity. And then the program itself has been updated, so iReady is, it has a new version. And so we need to make sure that all staff get, get, understand like all the different changes that went into effect, um, last year and this year. So last year, the focus was really on that elementary changes, and this year, they have major changes to the middle school portion of it too. So they have a training from ten fifteen, and against just whoever's a classroom teacher or special educators that support iReady, and then any, uh, sixth or eighth grade teachers from ten fifteen to one o'clock. We also have, um, every year we have a CISA training that comes in, it's a safety training, um, for our art teachers, our tech ed teachers, our science teachers, it talks about like handling, um, the chemicals in all of those areas in a, in a safe way. So they have a training, um, anyone that's not in that training will report back to their buildings. And so some of the principals have things, um, the elementary principals are gonna work with some of their main teachers. And they can't have a building meeting because we have so many, it's just a lot of moving pieces and all the different trains that needs to take, to take place. So it may be like a department meeting, or we might bring two departments together and cover the things that we need to, to cover. But the principals will kind of handle that, or the teachers will have prep time again to be able to do vector, um, and we have some online training, um, that we're requiring with double or pathogens, and they'll have some time embedded into their day to be able to complete that. And then.
So for support staff, they're also coming to safety training, and this is all support staff, um, from our bus drivers to building people, um, along with, this year we did like all of our substitute teachers to our safety training. So we'll be all together, um, we're, we're in coordination with the Toma PP again. Um, Jean Patterson will be doing the presentation for the most part, um, like he did last year. And then, um, after our ensure, uh, the support staff will be coming back to the auditorium for a session on the auditorium recording. Learning teachers, the teachers are gonna see that already. Then we will, um, break for lunch after that, and we'll talk with all the substitutes. And then in the afternoon, it's gonna be paid time, but they do have online, like, as you said, bloodborne pathogen, there's some cybersecurity, some things that all people in our, in our district may require to do, but they'll have paid time, and they'll be able to do that. That's it.
You had a lot on there, and I, if I understand it correctly, we can attend?
Yeah.
So the schedule would be, I don't know, how would we get that?
We can, yeah, we, we, I mean, everything we can, you know.
Okay, and then probably have to get that waiver, if it's not a, I mean, because we don't know who's going to come, all you need to know.
I'll need to know exactly what day, so I know for Tuesday for sure I'll post notice of one, but if you all let me know, you know, like, during the other days, I just, we need to make sure that there's more than three. I'm aware of that, it's twenty-four hours.
Okay, so you couldn't just leave it that and say, okay.
I possibly do it maybe.
No way, cause we don't know.
Yeah.
Things can change.
And you're gonna email that schedule out to all of the teachers, but, but thank you.
Awesome, I think it's great. All the things you recovered, I think Heidi referenced that, so the people are on the same page. You know, and then pick up from your side, and I think it's, actually. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next we have finance and operations, and a review, August fifteenth, equalized valuation estimate.
Alright, so this is embedded, um, and it just came out this afternoon, this one I received. I was hoping it would be out there, so I put up the jet app Friday. Um, it's just a little tidbit of information that's still an estimate, but it's getting us closer to being able to figure out our revenue limit. Um, so as you can see, the, our property taxes in the Toma area school, our properties in the Toma area school district are set to increase approximately ten percent over last year with a one point one percent increase on new construction. So what that means for us is that as your property base increases, then the overall tax base of the school district increases, and then that can affect the bill rate. Um, the mill rate again is what, um, taxpayers pay on our million dollars worth of property. And the mill rate really is dependent upon our revenue limit, but the property value from our district is part of figuring out the, the revenue limit. So we still have to go through the, uh, clear Fridays, June, come September. Um, we still need to do our altar costs to the district, our opening enrollment cost. And when we get all of that, um, then we'll be able to set our, um, levy in October, end of October. So yeah, just a bit of information that came out that has changed.
So it's good. Questions for anything, or? Okay, thanks for getting that to us, to look over. Alright, we have no unfinished business, and next under new business, we have consideration and possible approval. Toma High School Huddle Platform, the different business sponsorship levels.
Registration highly recommends approval, so we're just here to that, thank you so much for putting this together, Brett.
Good evening, um, a month ago I was here, we talked about Huddle, um, prices have gone up, and so we were able to lock in, um, our prices at, at eighteen thousand dollars for the next few years. We won't be able to look for, for our contract. Big shout, uh, with our Huddle platform to our, our white, our black, our gold, which is our three platforms, fifteen hundred, seven fifty, um, and five hundred dollars. Again, semi-permanent, which is digital, and it's only good for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, so these are the following businesses, um, there, there's no, in my opinion, there's, there's nobody in question, drugs, alcohol, that, that, that really goes against anything in our Board of Education, uh, policies. So I just had the list there, um, according to the Board of Education document that you guys have to approve these, um, going forward, um, you know, for this school year. So we raised over twenty-one thousand, twenty-one, seven fifty. Obviously, some of that has to go to, um, the busher club as well, um, to be able to pay for our, um, in-the-hand bushers that, that all that are colored, um, that are made by a local business for us, and cheap prints on the inside. So we're looking at maybe now only the cost to the district being slightly just under, uh, three thousand, maybe two thousand dollars compared to eighteen thousand dollars. So I thought that was a really good partnership with our community, um, having these businesses. At this point, uh, if they're approved, then I'll let Huddle know to be able to make the commercial and be able to, I mean, go on our Huddle TV to get all these, uh, sponsorships out there. And on, on the back of the programs.
Any questions for Mr. Bluber?
Joel, first name, not Joey.
His real name, oh yeah, I don't know, that's what Joey's choice is.
Oh, okay.
You like Joey?
Okay.
I actually call Joey.
I don't, I've just seen his name listed, and it's always been Joel, so I did not, it was a typo, I just didn't want it to get put on everything and then realized.
He has, it's on his, it might be a typo on his card, whatever's on there, they sent me the little one.
I mean, I don't, like I said, I don't want us to like break all this stuff and then be like, crap, it's wrong. But I just bring him up, just okay.
I'd make a motion that we certainly accept that. Appreciate all the hard work to, it ain't just all come to you, it's standing, so thank you.
Awesome.
Okay, motion by Spencer to approve it, and a second by Heidi, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't know if you're saying right. It's DC Everest, DC Everest's checking.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, moving on, we have the consideration and possible approval and report on expulsion data in the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year and expulsion history, consider that.
in the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year and expulsion history and consider that.
The district recommends approval, I will have all so proud talking so much for bringing this before the annual review board.
So last year, if you ask for less data, more current, so what they have for you is looking differently than what you see before its last five years. So last school year plus a few more years after that. In in addition, with the graphs, you see you have a key, so you can understand what each event is. So for example, if you look at student outcomes, you'll see that you know graduated means they graduated from the Toma area school district. Um incarcerated or G means a jail or prison, um that's zero anyway. Um I did not uh give a key to what dropout means, because I thought that was pretty expunged and subcutted for, but it's also not the key. Transferred to another school district and attending that school, that's what that remains. And on track to graduate, because they're still within our system and they're on track to graduate with their class. Um the rest of the events kind of go through their like event type, which we the next graph um talks about drugs, a student was disciplined for violation of A O D A, which is either repeated possession or dealing. Um weapon, um again, so understanding that a student had a weapon under our policies and statute. Uh threat, basically the student created a threat for the property or staff or students. And the other is kind of like the vocabulary of everything else, which includes things like fighting, repeating rules and rules, things like that, it's kind of the catchall for those things that are very common. Um the type of school, again, these are just percentages, I'm not giving you the actual numbers because those numbers are too small and would breach privacy for uh rules. Um again, we have middle school, high school, already elementary, you'll see the majority of those are at the high school. The last one is is type removal, and this is something I think you wanted to see last year as well, was you'll see that there are three types we have expulsions, that the student came before, came before the board and had a board hearing and the board expelled them. The next type is an in loop, is an agreement with the district administrator that you have given the district administrator powers to have of an in move expulsion instead of expulsion. There is some advantage to the student outcomes for that because an expulsion record would eliminate military service and the ability to attend a different school. And the last type is an interim alternative education setting, that is only for special ed students and I P teams that pay that, nobody else. Any questions about this?
I I have a couple of questions. Uh obviously, we're trying to focus on, as we determine priorities, behavior discipline and obviously communication. So how can we help the process to um assist prior to getting to these? Because this is this is the end of the line, not the beginning. There's there are indicators along the way, how can we help or what can we do?
Well, I'm only here to talk about the expulsion removal type, so that's actually a different question. But I can tell you that if the administration has an in lieu or interim alternative cases setting or an expulsion, we deem it to be a serious violation of the student rules, that would mean the student uh needs to be or we're asking the student to be removed. What you're asking is that before, and I don't have that information nor am I prepared to speak about that.
Okay, then I'll ask I'll ask another question then.
Yeah.
Uh what role do you play in the disciplinary process?
Well, the easy part is anything special ed, I'm the quarterback, so I play a point.
Alright, others?
That's easy.
Other special.
For the in lieu or expulsions, those are ones because how the board has set up our systems here, one way or another, I'm getting those students. So I take a role in assisting the administration, the board or the district administrator to prepare and advance that student so they can continue their education, put it in another setting. Because in the end, what we're saying is the student, we want to help this kid, this student, but we're deeming them not probably to be in the general population because of what they did. I mean, you know, if we have a student that's dealing drugs, we don't want them in our schools. We don't, so where can we put them that they can continue their education, but also not create havoc? Or a student that is repeatedly fighting with peers, you know, do we want to keep that student in our schools? Or do we want to give them an alternative pathway towards graduation? Those are the kind of things we can do.
Yeah, and and I guess that's kind of where I'm focusing, it it wasn't one event that brought them. And and I guess that's.
Well, it could be.
Well.
Yeah, if I'm dealing pot and I've got, you know, a couple of dime bags.
I understand, I understand.
Sorry, that's an old term, but I'm not.
I understand that, but typically it is a sequence.
It could be.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying, because we want to address the disciplinary process and how we can intervene in some way. That's what we've committed to, to say, what can we do to address those? I was just asking your role in that whole process, we get to be get any action.
I'm I'm kind of the end.
Oh, that's what.
It could be the beginning if there was a special ed student, but you know, for some of the other general students.
So most of the things that we're referring to, there are some behavioral issues that weren't as egregious that we put them on, and that's all I'm saying.
One of the things you may want to look at is also like where, you know, where are these students now? And if you look at the numbers even, and these match up, actually, the last five years are better than what we have for the twenty plus, I'm just reporting you. We always used to have about eighty percent success rate, well, it's actually a lot higher than that. Students that are on track or have graduated, that's that's a big deal, which means the students haven't been lost. But they have a different pathway, because one size doesn't fit all. And many students that come through the process do graduate and they go on. I mean, I can't talk about people who were hired, the regional manager of a section of our state who runs Horizon. These are all students that came through Cooperum, okay? They've learned from their mistakes and they've figured it out, as we all have, because no one here is perfect. And they did very well with themselves, I mean, they're they're living the dream like we all are, they're buying houses, having families, getting married, it's beautiful. Paying taxes.
Any other questions about this? Okay, and if somebody would like, I need a motion to accept that report.
I'll make the motion.
Everybody, motion, uh second?
I'll second.
Sue, sue, I'm sorry. And a second by Sue, all those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then we'll move on to consideration possible approval of the annual report of seclusion and restraint data from the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year.
Administration recommends approval of the report, thank you, Dr. Patterson, for this presentation.
So state statute says we have to do this report before September, which is what we're doing at this moment. Um this data is gathered, it's public record on T P I database on all schools and all districts. Like the first report, anything under five, five or under, cannot report. Um so if you take a look at the data, and again, this has changed from before, I haven't given you the the whole history of that, I just gave you the snapshot of the last five years, so it's last school years and a few years after that. Again, you'll notice that the numbers are pretty much the same, you know, little changes here and there, but nothing to get excited about. We're looking at seclusion and restraint, basically when we do a seclusion or restraint on a student, and this is any student, okay? That's, you know, this is not police, this is just our employees, okay? We have deemed and determined that student is a direct threat to themselves or others. And not that I'm pushing them, like I'm on top of the kid, I'm a peer and I'm coming to space it. Or I'm trying to hurt you as a teacher. And I'm not saying like pushing, I'm saying hurt you, okay? It's basically what we do is, the term is, you know, basically fair for your life for that kid, okay? So we don't do it too often, it's actually one of the last things we do because it's it's hard. And no one likes doing it, no one likes getting that call that that's happened to your child, um like that. So the one thing is I do have to report though, there is one school that has more than five. And I do have to report that school, usually you don't have this conversation because your numbers are pretty low, but last year it was the middle school. Okay, and the middle school had eleven incidents total, nine students did those eleven incidents. And seven of those students were special ed students. Statute says I have to say, any questions?
Questions about your word? Nice, and I also would look for a motion to approve that report. Motion by Heidi, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ricky, all those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm not actually abstaining from that.
You're gonna abstain from the second one? Okay, 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 so six or five zero and I'm abstaining, so. Hey, yep, thank you for the question.
Thanks.
Okay, next would be consideration impossible approval in school forest land information and proposal specification sheets.
So embedded are the sheets that you saw um previously, with one little spot left that you pulled out and that is the minimum amount per acre that the board like set for um those two properties. And doing a little research, um it is becoming more and more common for lands in this area to go anywhere from eight to ten thousand dollars an acre. And um my my recommendation is going to be that if the board has considered nine thousand an acre as a minimum. And if we we get to our deadlines and we don't have an offer, then we come back to the board and we change that.
Uh questions, discussion?
I'm going to discuss a little bit about the the date, you know, because it's a contradictory dates that we may want to consider to give it a little more, a little more time, just just to discuss.
The dates that are in there are just barely for the I put in there. So um we those can be changed and and like I told for finance, we're gonna send these to the lawyer one more time just to look over, so that's gonna take a week or two. So that's probably already um pushed it into October. But if you can tell me, you can tell me that uh this is the last, we we want to have this by this date, and we can have that before that. Or we can just um, we filled it in after we get the paperwork back.
I don't I don't have a problem filling it in, which I get, yeah, amazing, but that's just that's just my take. I just think that that October one is a little too tight.
From the time the paperwork gets done, I mean, you know, part month, is that for sure?
I would think advertising, the one person I talked to said, you know, advertising from, you know, four to six weeks is not uncommon, shorter time. It depends on if there are already people that have expressed interest in, you know, wanting the land. We haven't had people come forward and say, hey, are you going to sell this because we're interested? Um but both properties are in populated areas in our district. Um they both, one more than the other has very nice forests on it. Um one's next to public country land, one class state highway, so I mean, it's, they're good properties.
Oh, I I mentioned in our meeting earlier in the um finance to put a sign out for each of the properties so if you're driving by with no, um especially Jackson Forest, that's public hunting land, there'll be a bunch of hunters up there here in the fall, um bear hunting and what have you, so if anybody's interested in it for hunting, they could get a, a good start.
Other discussion? If not, we would look for a motion to approve it as presented with a number that you specified in your motion.
What motion? We uh listed for a minimum of nine thousand per acre and that uh this department has the uh authority to give that proposal in the, et cetera.
Good, that a shot?
Yeah. When will you start actually? Getting this out?
As soon as I get back. I can, um I think, I mean, it's one of those things, we're gonna share those with our staff, we put it in on this book and we feel we forward it, whatever we do.
Right.
I'll second.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, you said it in the app, I was like.
No, no.
So a little bit of discussion, nothing major, but uh there's a motion by Spencer to list it for a minimum of nine thousand an acre and Sue just seconded it. So all those in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good?
Michelle, thank you, that's a little more.
Yeah, that's fantastic, it's good to keep that moving on. Okay, next, this is just the first meeting and some discussion if needed, uh no action on policy three, four, four, zero, job related expenses. Policy five, four, one, one, third grade promotion and retention at risk students. Policy five, seven, seven, one, search and seizure. Policy six, one, one, zero, grant funds. Policy six, one, 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 internal controls. Policy six, one, one, two, cash management of grants. Policy six, one, one, four, cost principles, spending federal funds. Policy six, three, two, five, procurement of federal grants slash funds. Policy seven, three, one, zero, disposition of personal property. Policy seven, four, five, zero, property inventory.
Thank you all so much, uh into our policy committee, thanks for letting me not have one meeting with you. These are so strict in their uh federal requirements or language that goes into all things federal grants. So uh first and foremost, they went to Michelle and Amy Grolls in our business office. They are aligned directly to what's required under the U T G uniform guidance and the code of federal regulations under the EDGIR program, the Education Department General Administrative Regulations. So all of this information is mandated and required as we walk through our federal grants award. And I I will tell you, as you all know from previous audits, uh this business office knows how to run this. Uh so everything is done in extraordinarily professional and appropriate manner. Uh you have walked through many of those grants in terms of ESAR and the depth that those can go through in terms of ensuring direct and indirect costs are appropriately managed and uh that the grant in and of itself is appropriately applied for, allocated, and then the deliverable is there. And now you also have those thresholds uh when things need to be disposed of and and the board, administration recommends a ten thousand dollar value to that. You'll see some of those other thresholds that you're aware of that on two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. See, those different ceilings that you have and some of your other policies certainly can be drawn over here in terms of bid specifications, et cetera. Now, the two policies I would like to talk about that are not related to federal grants. Uh we had a fantastic meeting with um uh Toma P D and we touched base with them several times throughout the year in terms of just talking about safety, but as we still look at our search policy, it does only note principal, A P or district administrator. And we do have dean in the district and maybe there will be a new alignment of those that might take part in the searches. So uh we would like to add designated, and that way the board has the opportunity because of there, you have other districts with deans or I've been in districts where there's actually safety personnel, you know, so not saying we'd ever get to that approach, but it really opens things up in terms of what new naming conventions might be done with the first thing here. So I highly recommend that in our second month there. And then with fifty four eleven, you'll notice that the new language is all about parent notification of uh it's all Act twenty language in terms of the personal reading plans. That's all part of our mediation strategy, what we've been doing already. So um absolutely make those notifications, I mean, for already this year, last year, excuse me, how impactful that programming has been, we're gonna bring that information certainly back to you this year and hopefully those same measures of success with the new signs and reading implementation here at Toma area schools. So first reading there, if you have any questions to offer. Thank you for these very strict language recommendations.
Any questions or anything today about that? Uh there'll be no motion tonight, it's just the first reading, so any discussion?
On um this is the search and seizure one about, do we, do you even have um the dogs, the drug dog come in?
They they can come in um when principals want to schedule them, you know, so I wouldn't necessarily have these times they've been in, but for certain, they can coordinate that, so we highly um recommend that.
Anything else? Okay, we'll see those again next month for approval.
Thank you.
Uh but last thing on the regular agenda would be just mention of the upcoming events.
Yes, upcoming events, um not a whole lot on this one. Uh we talked to the end services, first day of school, September second, so we're here to have that picked on.
Labor Day, so no Board Academy?
No Board Academy, correct.
Okay, in all the discussions, we would look to go into contemplated close session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section nineteen point eight five one C. Discussion potentially take action regarding the compensation of a recently hired teacher, a motion to go close.
So.
Motion by Heidi, take roll call.
I guess you can roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
This is, this race?
Yes.